We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on May 2nd, 2023 to order at 3:02 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors, portion of the agenda on items other than public hearings. Speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you haven't had one, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Looking forward to today's meeting. We've got a great agenda for you. It has three public hearings on it and six ordinances as well as a total of 18 resolutions, and I'm going to highlight three of those for you this afternoon. The first highlight being Resolution 319. This, I'm very excited to bring this to you. If you can't hear it in my voice, it's a big deal. 319 represents the last of eight settlement agreements for the affected parties as part of the city's application to develop a new regional landfill near Texas Highway 31 and FM 939. The three parties included in this settlement are the acronym SAFE, which stands for Save, Axiall Families and Environment, as well as James Trailer and the Tewocana Creek Water Control Improvement District Number One. This resolution really represents months of work with a total of 10 affected parties. Again, these being the final three parties for settlement. I will note that Axiall ISD and Mr. Trailer have signed the agreement that's in front of you. The Water Control Improvement District has agreed in principle to the settlement and has a board meeting scheduled next week to approve the settlement. The reason I'm excited about the item is it's the effect of it. The effect of this resolution and the prior agreements mean the permit for the new landfill will move from a contested case hearing status. As council knows, that would have taken place in front of a state office of administrative hearings judge. It moves to being an administrative decision now by the executive director of TCQ. The effect of such a move means that it's a significant reduction in the amount of permitting time, which will improve our overall situation related to ensuring that we have a new landfill constructed well before the complete filling of our existing landfill. So that's why I'm excited to put this in front of you. I want to give a few recognitions because as I mentioned, this is a whole lot of work going into this, in some cases for months, in some cases for years. I'll start with the legal team. We, John Patterson, senior assistant city attorney, who's since retired, worked on this for a number of years, as well as Sarah Raely. I think Sarah's in the audience. There she is. You'll wave. Yeah, Sarah's out there. And of course, Jennifer Ritchie, our city attorney, spent significant time on this. From Solid Waste, of course, Cody Patel and Chuck Dowdell. Cody's in the audience today, as well as Deidra Emerson, deputy city manager, and Paul Kane, assistant city manager, spent significant time on this. And we've brought in, as you know, various external team members as well. And I want to highlight the work of Lloyd Gosling's team, particularly Jeff Reed, Duncan Norton, and Matty Esturis. It really took a team pull here to get to today, and just want to say a special thanks to each of those team members.
I just want to say how much I am thankful for staff's hard and diligent work to get us to this point, and again, thank you to our staff.
I'll just echo briefly. Yeah, I do appreciate staff's efforts on this also, and I appreciate the efforts of the neighboring jurisdictions and individuals on this thing, too. It seemed like most of the issues were safety oriented, and so I think you came up with some good conclusions here. And thanks for everybody's efforts in getting this moved along. Bradley.
All right. Second highlight for today is Resolution 323. This resolution would select Isaacson Miller to serve as our search firm, executive search firm, as we look for the next director of the Cameron Park Zoo. Isaacson Miller is well-regarded in the zoo industry and has conducted multiple successful executive recruitments recently, including for folks like the Tulsa Zoo, Caldwell Zoo in Tyler, the Houston Zoo, San Diego Zoo, Denver Zoo, and last but not least, they conducted the search for the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the AZA. Their own president and CEO was selected by this firm. I'll serve as the city's primary representative on the search team alongside Missy Pashowski, our HR director. We'll also have representatives from the Cameron Park Zoological Society on the team. And lastly, we're inviting a former zoo director from another Texas zoo to serve on this search team. I look forward to diligently working over the next few months to find us a great leader for Cameron Park Zoo, and hopefully be announcing that around October of 2023. Last and certainly not least is a highlight for the significant street work in Resolution 330, which would award a contract to Knife River Corporation to reconstruct Bagby Avenue from Kendrick Avenue to Valley Mills. Bagby Avenue is a collector road and carries significant traffic. If you're going fast enough, you know, it qualifies you as riding a roller coaster, in my opinion, because it has significant undulations all over the place. The project we're bringing forward tonight, it includes all utilities, water, sewer, and drainage as well, and overall project costs are north of $10 million. It'll represent one of our largest street project investments for this upcoming year, and we expect work to start in the summer of 2023 and conclude by December of 2024.
Thank you for that, City Manager Bradley Ford. I appreciate that. You know, folks are always saying, when are you going to fix our streets? And when are you going to fix our streets? And when we see something like this, it excites me and I'm sure the constituents as well. So thanks, staff, and you for bringing this forward to us. It will be an inconvenience for a while, but it'll be worth it. And let's not forget, there's an elementary street right there on Kendrick.
That's right. That's right.
I'll chime in here, too, Alice. Yeah, this is great. The Bagby one, there's actually three resolutions in today's agenda that speak to street and roads improvements, and one of them's on U Parks, all the work we're trying to get done down there, the Bagby. This is a huge project, almost $11 million. And then there's the micro-surfacing that's all over the city. So I think it demonstrates our commitment, this council's commitment to roads and infrastructure. And again, we're spending more than we've ever spent. So you see a lot of orange cones out there, but we're working to get the infrastructure of the city put back to where it needs to be.
All right, Mayor and council, that concludes my comments for today. Take any questions you might have of me.
Good. Lost my place here in one second. Consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 318 through 335. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, just one of my last mayor pro temp updates before the end of my term is that this is the second consecutive meeting of having no conflicts of interest. I want to thank Michelle and Jennifer for their work.
Consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 318 through 335. The next item on the agenda is a work session item, 305 through 308. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Excited about this first one. We've got Nick Starpy, our director of finance, coming up to give work session 305, which is a discussion of the second quarter financial report as well as the investment report. We did provide you a lengthy update in the packet that went out Friday. Overall, I don't want to instill any of Nick's thunder. Overall, feeling like this is a great mid-year report. This represents six months' worth of financials and gives you a great look into how the year is going from an expense control standpoint as well as revenue generation standpoint. I look forward to Nick's presentation today.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. So as Bradley mentioned, we're here to give the second quarter or March financial report update. So overall, the second quarter includes the unaudited financial statement, unaudited financials through the end of March. All of our non-financial data is the most current. We compare budget to the same period of last year, and we also include projections for all the funds. So from the general fund side, the general fund's been doing fairly well so far throughout the year. Sales tax and property tax, which we knew would be a big one, are the biggest increases that we see, along with investment interest, but that's partly due to our mark-to-market that we do. So that could change and will change at the end of the year. On the expenditure side, we're pretty much in line where we should be. We're slightly less than what we spent last year as far as year-over-year comparison, as far as a trend goes, and so we're doing really well in the general fund, which is the most important fund because it's our primary operating fund of the city. So this slide shows our projection for the year. So through six months, we're projecting revenues to come in above budget, again primarily because of sales tax, and then expenses are going to be roughly about 94%. On this slide is also our sales tax forecast, where you can see as we get closer to the end of the year, our projections become more firm as far as what we expect the actual revenues to be. So the water fund, so through the quarter, they have revenues totaling about $29.5 million, which is slightly less than their budget, slightly less than half of their budget. But we know for water, the bulk of the revenues actually come in the back half of the year because of the summer, and the revenues thus far this year are more than what we had collected so far last year. Expenses, so one thing with expenses is these numbers include their encumbrances, which is what they would pay out through the rest of the year. So they look slightly inflated at this point, but that's because they plan to spend money over the next six months within these numbers. And so they're a little bit more than last year, and a lot of that has to do with increased transfers out, which we did for capital projects. So we added an additional $1 million for improvements at the water office for their parking garage. All right, so this is our current projection. So we're projecting revenues to come in at about 102% of budget and expenses to be below budget. The water department, and you'll see this throughout the rest of their funds, does a really good job of managing their expenses to their revenues. On the slide as well is the rainfall totals through the quarter in comparison to the last five years. All right. Wastewater, so far they've generated $21.8 million, and so they're exceeding budget. And so for wastewater through this quarter, we pretty much have a really good idea of where they're going to end because of the winter cost averaging that we do for wastewater pretty much establishes it for the rest of the year. And so they're about 1.3 more than last year as far as revenues go. Expenses are $26.6 million, and they're 4.1 million more through the quarter compared to last year, primarily because of increased flows to WMARS, which is the other expense line, as well as professional service costs. So for wastewater, we're projecting revenues to be about 108% of revenues and expenses, again, to be below budget. So on the WMAR side, so revenues are 8.4 million through the quarter, 2.3 more than last year, which makes sense because we've had a wetter year so far this year compared to last year, and WMARS is all about the flows, and when it rains more, they get more flows. Expenses are about $9 million so far through the year, primarily due to increased supply costs and capital expenditures. So for both revenues and expenses for WMARS, we expect them to both be under what we've forecasted based on the budget. But comparatively, I will say, and I just noticed this going through this, that on the water slides, that the split between the revenues and expenses are about 6% or so. On solid waste, so solid waste is doing really well so far this year. People keep bringing their trash, and so far revenues are 3.7 million more through the quarter than last year, in part because of the rate increase, but also because people keep bringing their trash to the landfill. And expenses is where you'll see that as well, are 4.8 million higher because of capital expenditures that we have related to equipment purchases and then as well as their encumbrances for professional services. Primarily for them, it's temporary services. So staying with that, they're doing so well, we expect the revenues to be about 114% of budget, and expenses at least through this quarter to be about 92% of budget. Airport, so $73,000 more than last year, and that primarily has to do with the mark-to-market on interest revenue. Expenses are about $448,000 higher than last year from professional services and maintenance, but this one still has access to cares funds for the rest of this year, and so we expect there to be increases of fund balance for the airport fund. So we're projecting revenues to be about 108% of budget, and that's why, because of the access to the cares funds, which is the grant revenue, and expenses to be about 95% of budget. Conventions, so hotel motel taxes, we continue to see months that are far greater than they've been in the last five years and some of the largest numbers we've seen, and that's contributed to 379,000 year-over-year increase. Overall, the fund as it's getting back to normal for conventions and things like that, it's about almost $1 million in revenue greater than last year. So for conventions, we budgeted at $7.5 million. You'll notice that we intentionally budgeted to spend down fund balance for the convention fund, and so far we spent $4 million and are about $412,000 higher through the quarter. All right, with the growth in hot tax, we are expecting revenues to be about 134% of budget and expenses to be about 85% of budget. So probably the most consistent fund is the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame. They do a pretty good job of having revenues come in right around where budget should be, expenses are right around where budget should be, and it's no different so far through the first two quarters of the year. So overall, we're expecting revenues to be about 105% and expenses to be about 92%. All right, Cameron Park Zoo. So revenues through the quarter are $2.7 million, and they're about $10,000 down from last year. And best we can tell, it's from less purchases, net merchandise purchases at the zoo. Partly that has to do with less purchases at the gift shop, but also because the coffee shop, which they just opened, was shut down. So we're expecting that to boost up now that it's open and as people start going there. Expenses are about $3.9 million through the quarter, and it's a year-over-year increase of $827,000, primarily related to the capital expenditures, which includes the aviary net, which I think they're still waiting to install, and then personnel costs, which is for the zoo, any salary increases have a larger impact proportionately at the zoo than they do anywhere else. So at this point, we're projecting revenues to come under budget significantly at about 84%, but expenses to be in line with the revenues. Cottonwood, so Kenny and the parks team do a really good job out there, and they've continued to do a good job out there. So thus far, they've brought in $1.4 million in revenue, and then revenues from operations are about $515,000 more than last year, which is really important because that's their performance and that's what they're doing out there. Expenses are right in line with revenues throughout the quarter. They're $420,000 more than last year, and that really has to do with the encumbrances for temp services. So in cottonwood, we're projecting revenues to exceed budget by about 5.2% and expenses to come in pretty much right on budget. So the drainage fund continues to work on ensuring that they're billing all the parcels in the city. So the budget we had set for this year was based on 114,000 equivalent residential units of impervious service. So far, revenues total $3.2 million, which is about 44% of budget. They're $320,000 more than last year, but factoring in that there was a 10% increase in rates this year, but they've done a really good job of increasing their billing. I think they've increased their billing numbers by about $12,000, or $12,000 to $16,000 year-over-year use every month cumulative through this quarter. Expenses total $3.8 million, and they're about half of their budget so far. They're more this year than last year because of capital expenditures and just in general for drainage, this is its second full year of operations, and so they're still in that startup phase and getting to where their operations are consistent. So overall, for drainage, we expect revenues to come in about 89% of budget, expenses to be about 76% of budget. All right, transit. So transit revenues are budgeted at $9.3 million. We've collected 4.7, almost exactly half of their budget. They're 1.5 million more than last year, and that's primarily from intergovernmental revenues, which is the driving, the largest revenue source for transit. Expenses are pretty much in line with where they're at as far as the revenue side goes at 5.1 million through the quarter, and they're $2 million higher year-over-year due to the vehicle purchases that we've done for transit. So overall, we're projecting revenues to be about 96% of budget and revenues to be about, or expenses to be 93%, and the revenues to be about 96%. All right, the investment report. So as of the end of the quarter, our portfolio totaled $833 million, which is an increase of nearly $192 million, which a lot of that had to do with the 2023 bond issue. We have an unrealized loss of $7.2 million, which is a $2.75 million decrease from the prior quarter that has to do with as our investments that had lower interest rates are maturing, we're buying new ones at higher interest rates. Investment income totaled about $5 million through the quarter, and our days to maturity decreased to 139 days from 188 days, which makes sense given the interest rate environment and what the Fed has been doing, where they're raising rates, you want to be on the short end of the duration cycle. Our portfolio is yielding 3.53% compared to the tax pool of 4.61 as of the end of March, and again, that makes sense as we have some of the lower interest, longer-dated investments that are slowly coming off the portfolio. And in your packet, I will add, and this isn't on the slide, one thing that I'm really excited about that the team has put together shows our purchases of investments and who we've been working with as far as who we're buying investments from, and I'm really excited that we're being very inclusive in who we're purchasing investments from, or at least giving them the opportunity to bid on our investments. And so you fully will see this report going forward each quarter, and I'm really excited about the work that in particular Rusty on my team has been doing with our investment advisor to make sure we're including all parties and the opportunity to bid. All right, so overall, our budget was set to be based off of our activity that we're seeing in '22, and so far we've seen strong sales and hot tax revenues throughout the year. And I will add that we've also noticed that the growth in them, although numerically they're growing, they're not always exceeding the inflation rates year-over-year. And so the budget team will continue to monitor that and pay close attention to that as we go forward. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll start. Nick, great, great report. I mean, this compared to what we used to have, and I don't say this every quarter, but the reporting that we used to have before you kind of took this over, I mean, I like everything you're doing here, and actually, you're not even getting to the, what starts on page 96, which is a more expanded version of the P&Ls with a lot of detail and year-over-year detail and budget detail, and I'm just so thankful that you've gotten this in shape. And you've got metrics in there, too, on the attendance figures and arrivals and departures, so it kind of creates nice snapshots of each one of the funds. So I appreciate your work. Just a couple of observations, I think you kind of hit on on your summary page. Happy to see the sales tax trends going the way they are. I think year-over-year, we're about 10% ahead. Through six months, we're at $29 million. Where last year we were only at $27,000. I think we budgeted even a lower number than that, so that's good. The hotel motel tax, as you mentioned in your summary comments, great trends there, too. I think it's the best March we've ever had, if you look at the trailing five years in the information. And then I'll just commend staff and all of city management on, you know, we're in the face of the inflation and supply chain issues, and things cost more than they did a year ago, and all costs have gone up. And I know we budgeted into some of that, but the numbers are showing that we're holding the line on expenses and we're very closely in line with how we budgeted, so I commend staff on watching expenses also. So great report, Nick.
Second, Matt.
The complexities around our city budget are significant, and to be able to manage it really takes talent. So Nick, and to the entire budget team, sincere gratitude for all that you're juggling, and it really is a testament to our entire staff and their diligence to, fiscal prudence to be able to deliver a report like this. So thanks so much.
Thanks, Mayor and council. Our next one is also with Nick.
All right.
He's going to spend a few minutes talking about FY 2324 budget process and see what feedback the council has thus far. Nick?
All right, so 2324 budget. So I will jump right into it. So on this slide, you will see the preliminary values that we received from MACAD on Friday. And so you'll see on the slide that we had significant growth in our values for the city as a whole, approximately 23% from the certified values of 2022. Now, we know that some of those values will decrease, and so our expected amount, still growth from last year, is about 90% of the preliminary values that we received from MACAD. Overall, the values from MACAD were over $16 billion for the city's value, and so we're projecting that number to come down to close to $15 million or so. And this is outside of any legislative changes that the legislature may make, so these numbers truly are this year very preliminary in nature.
Nick, on this slide, when you look at expectation versus what they've released as their preliminary, is expectation based on our experience of protests of values, or is it also kind of what the final numbers land at? Or how, explain that for me if you don't mind.
So typically, we lose about 7% to 8% of our value through protests, and so we went lower than that just to be on the safe side. So it'll probably end up a little bit higher than that, but I'd rather be lower as far as what we're planning for in case there was some large protest that messed with the average of what we normally see.
But even with that, we're still expecting, our conservative expectation is a great deal more than last year in terms of total roll value there.
That's correct, based on what we know right now and the legislation that's in place as of today.
And those values are post-exemption?
Yeah, these are the taxable values.
Thanks.
Any questions?
And so that's pretty much all I had, so we wanted to give you a brief update on what just came out on Friday. And so we'll be back before you to present the preliminary CIP for 24. And so we'll be back before you to present the preliminary CIP for '24 through '28 next week at Budget and Audit. Hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have a final decision on our budget request. And then we'll talk about utility rates in June. And then Bradley plans to present the city manager's budget on the 27th, which would be a special meeting. And so the budget team is hoping to file the budget on the 30th of June. And then our certified tax rolls from MACAD aren't due until the end of July. And then technically, our budget's not due until the end of July. On August 1st, which is the first meeting in August, we'll present potentially the certified tax rolls. And then we'll have the resolution setting the date for the public hearing on the budget. And then on the 15th, we'll have the first reading of the orange sitting departments, unless I get it to you earlier, and that's my goal. Some of these items, I'm actually hoping to bring to you beginning in June. We'll have one new item this year as well, related to some fun movements that we plan to do. But these are all of our drop dead dates for everything. And then on the 15th of August, we'll set the, we'll set the date for the public hearing on the tax rate to be September 5th, with final adoption of the budget on August 29th.
And Nick, real quick, on the meeting on June 27th, which I think is the previous slide, I think all I've got on that is just an all-day meeting, which might be kind of a hold. Do we have a sense of when that's happening, staff-wise? Or is that not a meeting, it's just a, a date?
We, on the 27th?
June 27th?
Yeah, I don't, we're not planning to do an all-day session.
No, I know, it's just a calendar hold, but I guess the question is, do we have any idea what part of the day?
Just for, for calendaring purposes.
We'll ask the city secretary's office to poll you and, and meet at your leisure.
Is that a lengthier meeting expected?
Typically, I'll spend 45 minutes or so in presentation and then take your feedback, hour and a half tops, I would say.
Okay.
All right, that's all I got for you.
Any questions for Nick? Thanks, Nick.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Mike Seawright, our chief information officer's going to provide us work session 307, which is a discussion of public Wi-Fi expansion. And I've asked Mike to, on his introduction, to, to give kind of a, a background or a reminder of our prior investments in public Wi-Fi as well. So looking forward to hearing this presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bradley, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to give you an update on staff's recommendation as we seek your approval to expand free public Wi-Fi at six City of Waco facilities. This presentation is to support Resolution 2023-327 that is on the consent agenda today. And just a reminder, we did a pilot program back in September, and we submitted an IR to you at that time. So here's the outline for the presentation. I'll, I'll quickly go through some goals that we've set. We'll talk about the technology that we've put in the proposal. And then I'll show some visuals of the facilities that we're going to upgrade and show you some Wi-Fi heat maps that we've set up for that. And then we'll talk about strategy moving forward after we get through this initiative. So our, our goal from day one was to make sure we were looking at underserved areas of the community to deliver really good Wi-Fi access for our residents. And focusing on city-owned facilities, we did a feasibility study, and it just, for us, we didn't want to compete with local ISPs. We wanted to build out wireless infrastructure at city-owned facilities that our residents could take advantage of. Enabling a reliable, robust, and secure Wi-Fi connection is super important. Residents have to be able to be assured that when they go to a facility and connect, they can take care of business, they can do schoolwork, they can connect to a Zoom or Teams conference. And that comes with making sure we have plenty of bandwidth and plenty of access points for users that are connecting. And then enabling a consistent user experience at each location so that it's not different from site to site, that it's consistent. And also consistent for our IT technicians as well, that we're, we're installing consistent gear and consistent solutions across the board. So the proposal is 139 indoor and outdoor wireless access points, nine network switches to connect everything together, firewalls to make sure it's secure, that we're blocking the bad traffic and the unwanted traffic, and that the connections are encrypted at the same time. Also, a big portion of the budget is network cabling and installation from, from a local vendor that we've selected. Big investment here for, for free Wi-Fi at these, at these locations. And of course, my, on the funding side, I almost, almost put Galen Price's name there, but he's really been helpful for us to, to get this funded. So appreciate him.
A lot of the funding from this, if not all the funding, is coming from federal grants. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Question now, or wait till he's done with his presentation, Mayor?
Whatever you want to do.
I wanted to ask why the South Waco Library is not on the list. I'm assuming maybe because they already have Wi-Fi, is that right?
So, so I do have a slide on that. We, we do have some funds still available to us, and we are exploring at alternate locations as well. And so we can definitely, I'll work with Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson and Galen, and we can talk through that.
Well, South Waco Library is a city-owned facility, is it not?
It is.
It's not county, right? It's cities. I was just wondering why we weren't on that.
And, and bigger question, since you have the expansion locations up right here. Mike, do the multipurpose center and Doris Miller, are they, are they listed as one? Are they listed as two?
I have them listed as two. We were, we will share the bandwidth, and we will share some of the network gear with both of those locations. For the, for the free Wi-Fi side of this project.
Because I was like, it's the same space, so I don't know, like, as far as output for a community, so I didn't, you know, there's not a, I, I guess I was wondering if it was just because of internal things that need to happen with the upgrades for Miller, that that's what, that's what that is doing? Is that included in that? Because I was like, if it's, if it's just for the fact of, of bandwidth, then, you know, but answer, I didn't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, during the project, we won't stop both locations together. When we, when we put the outdoor units up, it'll be the same connection. So if a user is on the Doris Miller side and they connect, if they roam over to the multipurpose, it'll, it'll be the same connection.
And Mike, I, I apologize, us piling on here at the outset, but some of these are kind of threshold questions that we maybe need to understand kind of what exists now. Because I, to Councilmember Rodriguez's point, I would assume that all the libraries had strong publicly accessible Wi-Fi networks. Is, are, is there public Wi-Fi at all four of our libraries right now?
There, there is. The, a lot of that gear is, is getting pretty old, and so this will replace all of that infrastructure at those locations. So this will be a new connections, Wi-Fi 6 technology, very good bandwidth to replace all those. But yes, there is existing gear that we will remove out of those locations, and then this will be the replacement for that.
Okay. And then it, yeah, because I see, West Waco is adjacent to mine. I think it's technically in District 5, but I would assume that if this is successful, we'd want to roll this out to at least all the library locations. That seems like a no-brainer. South and West would be the two. I just want to make sure to see where we were on that, because that was also a question of mine.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the South Waco Library was just overlooked, or if they already had the Wi-Fi.
No, it was not overlooked. They do have Wi-Fi currently. They don't have outdoor Wi-Fi. And the, the gear that we're putting into each location, with some of the maps I'm about to show you, we want to make sure that the entire facility inside has complete coverage indoors and it's.
So you want us to hush so you can get on with your presentation?
Yeah. We'd argue most of our.
Not when I don't get an answer, right?
I would tell you if y'all just let me flip the slide.
Let you finish, go ahead. Sorry.
Here's just a general map of all the facilities. The Dewey, the Dewey Community Center, we've already completed, so that was good. But it just kind of shows you a visual of the other locations that we've selected. So the Doris Miller, 26 access points for indoor and then 12 outdoor. And so the, the goal there is to, for sure, inside the building, to every, every square-inch that facility is, is going to have good quality internet access for Wi-Fi. And then the outdoor APs, you know, exactly, we want to make sure we're pushing that signal out to the parking lots and to all the facilities, facilities outside of the, those buildings as well. So we use a, we use a system called EchoHow to take floor plans of a building, insert the technology within it, then it gives you a, a map of where the coverage will be once we spin all this up. We can adjust the power settings on those access points to get better coverage farther outside of the facility. But that's the goal, is to really push those signals out as far as we can so that anyone that needs a good connection can either drive up, sit outside in the seating area, and use the connection if they need to. East Library, the same thing. Within libraries, stacks, the book stacks can really do a number on Wi-Fi connections. And so at both library locations, we've added plenty of access points to make sure that the book stacks don't get in the way. So again, same type of scenario there, we're pushing those signals out as much as possible. Blitzen Miller, Miller Community, Community Center, excited about this location for sure with what Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson is doing here. Again, we wanted to make sure we had plenty of access points to cover the entire facility, the seating areas. You can even pull up in your boat if you wanted to and get Wi-Fi there. But we're, we're doing as much as we can to get those signals out as far from the building as possible. South Waco Recreation Center, they have really good seating areas outside of that building as well. And so again, once we get the gear installed, we'll make sure we're pushing those signals out as far as we can to those seating areas so folks can sit under a shaded area and use their laptop if they need to.
You say this has already been rolled out to Dewey, and that, so my son had rec center games at Dewey and South Waco, and my phone, because I'm connected with City of Waco, connects to those networks. And it is funny, because at Dewey, it was an automatic strong connection no matter where, and in South Waco, it would drop off, you know, as I'm walking through. So I, I think this will be a good upgrade for these facilities.
Yes, sir. And last section here, our last map here is the Central Library, 30 indoor access points for the facility and then five outdoor. And so again, the same concept is we just want to light that area up so that they can use it anywhere in that facility or outside of it. So from a strategy perspective, moving forward, one thing we, when we roll this, if we roll this out, we'll need to make sure that our technical support systems are solid, so folks know who to call, how to get help if they have trouble connecting. Make sure we're building out consistent FAQs from, at each facility. And then work with Monica's group to get the, get the word out that there, there are free public Wi-Fi locations around the city. And then again, explore additional City of Waco-owned facilities, and that's something we've got remaining dollars left, and we think that's important to make sure we pick the, pick the right locations to make the, make sure they have good access at those locations. Couple of things that we've found going through this is that connecting our facilities and having a good fiber optic backbone is, is super important. And so that's one thing we, we'll be working on as, as much as we can to bring, to bring a, a strategy around fiber optic connections into all of city facilities. And again, I think that's pretty important in this day and time, we have good connections there. And lastly, there are the solar solutions. We're, we're, we're working with some solar power stack poles currently to solve some public safety issues with really good success. And so I think there's some good use cases there to deliver Wi-Fi connections to hard-to-reach places with those poles. And not just for the community, but for city business as well. So excited about that technology that we've, that we're tinkering with so far, so. With that, I'll take any questions. And I ran through that pretty quickly, so I'm sorry about that, and, but I appreciate the question.
Yeah, Mike, this is great. This is really exciting. I think this will greatly serve our community. I, I worked my first three years as an attorney down in a rural broadband desert in Mylum County, and I had a legal assistant working on a degree. She'd have to go to a truck stop that had Wi-Fi to work on her, you know, her, her class work and connect with, taking online classes. So I, I know that for many of our residents who can't afford a strong, though they may be able to connect their residents to broadband, they can't afford it. This offers that gap for a lot of folks that can, they can go to a community center. But I would doubt there's a single member on council that would not approve expanding this to every single library at a bare minimum. So if this gets rolled out and y'all are looking at expansion, please consider those other two libraries so that all of our publicly accessible community centers have, have that strength in terms of signal.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for that, Josh. I would have still asked you, why doesn't South Waco Library, why aren't they in here? But thank you, Josh. Thank you as well. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
What is the possibility, Mike, of, because I, if they're, whatever the, I don't know what the dollar amount that's left in, because, you know, if you, certainly, the South, South and West libraries, but if you think about the spaces that are utilized, yes, you want the outside to have accessible Wi-Fi, people can pull into city-owned sites. But if they're combating up against a bunch of commercial, you know, commercial districts, are they not overlapping, like, for instance? Or is it, would it be competing with, like, for on the Quinn campus, would it be competing with what Rappaport has? Or, you know, and then the downtown area at Central isn't competing with whatever, I don't speak Wi-Fi, I just know it needs to be there when I turn the phone off. But I want to make sure that it is not.
Absolutely. We can, we plan to definitely take a look at that once we spin it up. And again, just making sure those signals are going exactly, exactly where we want them, want them to go. And, and absolutely, I don't think we want to push that access out into commercial locations. So, good point.
And, I mean, you know, because if we're thinking about residences and things that are proximal to our constituencies, then, you know, in addition to those libraries, I may also consider the OP Center?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's right there on Fourth and right across the street from a major neighborhood. So, I mean, just, just some of the thoughts. I mean, I know that eventually, and I, I look forward to seeing what the full rollout plan is, is when we, when we, the fiber and all the other opportunities that we have to improve our connectivity in the city. I mean, COVID showed us all our, our weak points, and, you know, and I think that this is an opportunity to really dig deep into the how and what, that the city itself can take off some of that burden. I know lots of, when, in my Main Street work, there are a lot of discussions about downtowns have being Wi-Fi accessible, you know, because they have the things that are on streetlights that are, Wi-Fi towers. And, I mean, all those things, and we looked at that. But I think that from this perspective, going where the, meeting people where they are, not just as opposed to where they come, is something that will, will truly be a standout for Waco. So I look forward to seeing what that plan looks like.
Yeah, like, I could see public gathering places like near the Suspension Bridge, or like, or Bridge, yeah, Bridge Street, or like Redwood Shelter, or other of the big shelters at Cameron Park. If they had some connectivity, that'd be amazing. But places where people gather or might just set up a laptop.
Well, I just know that at South Waco Library, there's no one around them. I mean, it's wide open, you know? So I don't think we have that to worry about as far as overlapping, but just a suggestion.
South Waco Library.
But yeah, Mike, great presentation. I know you only have so much money, you gotta make it spread as far as you can. And it looks like you've done a great job, and our objectives here are all in line with what we all want as far as Wi-Fi and broadband, and getting on the right page, and getting people access to affordable, computer access, knowledge of the world wide web. But yeah, as we, as this test, as this, as we test this pilot program, or, you know, get these going, South Waco and West Waco libraries, yeah, because Alicia brings up a good point. Libraries, you know, all kinds of people come to the libraries, and it'd be cool if they could study there and have access to the, to broadband and Wi-Fi.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Any other questions? This is great. Really excited about the, the positivity that will come from this.
Thank you.
All right. Clint, you have so much time.
Go over for, go over for the next meeting, too.
We're not going to cancel you. Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, doing a planning, public hearing, items discussion.
Thank you, Bradley, Mayor, Council. Yeah, the one time I have a bunch of time, and we have two public hearings. And they're real easy ones, too. The first one is a subdivision plat, this is final plat and construction plans. The first one is a subdivision plat, this is final plat and construction plans for Floyd Casey addition. This is the redevelopment of the Floyd Casey site by Turner Berenger Group in partnership with Waco. The final plat and construction plans is consistent with the new Floyd Casey overlay and design book, as well as all of our development standards, and the master development agreement with the city. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the plat and the construction plans.
And this map right here, Clint, represents the teal there, or the light green, the lime, I guess, it represents the city of Beverly Hills.
That's correct. So everything that doesn't have a color on it is Waco, and then the green is Beverly Hills.
Clint, I don't know if this is the time to ask, but if it isn't, you'll be prepared for when it is the time. You know, the developers that are coming in there, I have been asked, you know, since we have made presentations at some of the Neighborhood Association meetings, are the developers coming in there, are they thinking about making some affordable housing units and not just all high-end units? And I think my answer was, we were going to have a diverse group of homes, so I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but could you expand a little bit more on what I said to my constituents?
So you can see it on the plat map, there's a variety of different lot sizes, and so those are different housing types, from the townhouse to some apartments along Dutton to kind of the mid-range lots, the larger lots along the creek. So I believe there's six or seven different housing types within the development.
Another question. If a person wants to come in there and buy a lot and build their own home with their own builder, would that be allowed?
Yes, as long as they meet the design standards of the overlay.
So they don't have to go, like, make them look like the townhomes that are, that we've got scheduled for that, or can it be a standalone, you know, like, he wants gables, he wants this, he wants that? Would that be allowed in that area, or do they have to pretty much go with?
So there is potential for, and especially with the single-family lots, for variety of the housings, there are some minimum standards they have to meet.
Yeah.
And development standards to get that form, you know, because it's designed to be walkable, you know, big front porches, rear load either off the alley or, you know, side-load garages. And so as long as they meet those standards that are in the design book of the overlay, then they can build as they choose.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the questions that were asked of me. And I wasn't sure about somebody going in there and building their own home on a lot or two lots, if they choose to do that.
Yeah.
I just wanted a quick comment on this one, too. These kind of infill projects for residential housing, to me, are just fantastic, because this is where we have the infrastructure, this is where it makes a lot of sense to build. There's 259 lots here on 73 acres. We've got other projects that are similar to this, not necessarily as big, but what we have going on in U-Parks, all that, going in there, Trice, we've got a project going in, Elm, Sanger Avenue. So I think this council's been intentional about trying to figure out ways to get housing to the infrastructure, as well as dealing with the expansion of Waco and getting it into the suburbs, too. But these kind of projects, I find really exciting, and I appreciate your role in getting these platted.
I think this is one of the, this is going to be incredibly transformational for the good for this whole city. It has, to Councilmember Bearfoot's point, there's going to be a variety of price points to enter into in this development, and that was by design. And there's going to be families that can, you know, that have, again, an array of price points to enter into this neighborhood, beautiful green spaces, close to downtown, and it's going to really, I think, uplift this community. I appreciate the developers, I talked to them earlier this week, and they've been really thoughtful and strategic about how to lay out this neighborhood in a way that I think is going to be beautiful and stand the test of time. They were also really intentional with the community. I think they went to several neighborhood meetings early on in the process to hear what the community wanted, and worked closely with the council, which represents the community. In addition to that, and really was thoughtful in ensuring that, again, you have, as you mentioned, Clint, a variety of home types that people from all over our city will be able to take advantage of.
Another thing, I talked to Sarah, and we are meeting with her next week. She's going to lay out all of this, and I'm going to invite the Neighborhood Associations, all the three different ones in the district, so no one is left out, as far as Neighborhood Associations are, to come in and look at this. And I believe there was some discussion about, there's some streets that need to be named, and the name of the development. Are we always going to call it Floyd Casey Development, or are we going to call it something else?
Yeah, that's a great point.
So we're going to be discussing that with staff next week, Clint. So, and just letting the council know as well that we're going to be doing that, and if anybody really wants to go, let me know, and I'll let y'all know the time and place as soon as I find out. But I'm excited about this, because this has never happened in District 2, as long as I've been on this council. So I'm real excited about, in the very center, the heart of District 2, this is going up. So to me, I'm real excited about it. And we've never had this much space to put new housing.
Yeah, it's really an example of what I call greenfield infill, because it's such a large piece consolidated, where we can do something really great, and hopefully be a model for other developments that come in the future on development patterns.
And not to mention the substantial city investment in an adjacent park, which is just going to make this amazing.
Yes, the inclusive park.
Yep.
That I'm real excited about, and I know a lot of folks here in Waco are excited about, because there's not one here in Waco. This is going to be another first for us, and it's great that it's going to be right across a neighborhood, a beautiful neighborhood. So I'm excited about the whole thing. Do I look it? I don't know, but I am.
Very excited.
I'm excited. Thank you, Clint.
Our second public hearing is just cleaning up some language in our subdivision ordinance dealing with city engineer definition. Our current definition is outdated with current positions, name positions and department names, and so we are recommending to change the definition of city engineer from the city engineer and/or the director of engineering services to the director of public works of the City of Waco, or his or her desert knee. And this comes to you with a recommendation from the Plan Commission as well. That's it.
Any questions for Clint?
And then we've got a public hearing on an ordinance adopting standards of care for City of Waco youth programs. Will that be Galen Price handling that?
Jonathan.
Jonathan handling that, okay. And that's our standard annual standards of care update. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Clint. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
Mayor, if there's a desire to hear from Jonathan in any detail or answer any questions, he's available.
For Jonathan?
Stirtson Parks is 70 minutes. He could. But anyway, if there were questions, he's available and can answer them.
The questions, but if he did come up here, I would probably just praise him for the great job with the Suspension Bridge grand reopening for about 70 minutes.
Oh, yeah, that was awesome. That was awesome.
Any other requests for future agenda items? If not, we will now take a recess from the work session at 4:02 PM. There is no executive session, so we will reconvene in two hours. That's great.